So before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to review with those of you who are listening in and watching in the rules and procedures for a virtual meeting. Please bear with me as we do this every time, but for those of you who are new, we want to make sure you're aware of what the rules are. So number one, the meeting is open to the public with advance notice on the Borough webpage and a link that was provided. The agenda for the meeting was posted on the website in advance of the meeting for the public to download. The official record of the meeting will be the written minutes that must be submitted to council for approval. The recording of the meeting will not be the official record of the meeting. During the meeting, the council and staff will be the only live microphones. The public microphones will be unmuted to make comments during the public comment sections of the meeting on an individual basis. This will be so that the comments can be clearly heard by all. Public can use the raise your hand feature of the software and their microphone will be unmuted for them to comment. Members of the public must state their name and address before proceeding with their comment. If a commenter would like to have their comment in the minutes unabridged, it must be submitted to the Borough office in writing. In addition to that, I want to remind any citizens who wish to make comment that we are going to refrain from engaging in any kind of debate over an issue you bring up, but we will certainly take your comments under advisement and someone from either council or the staff will contact you hopefully with a suitable answer to whatever your question might be. While every attempt will be made to limit executive sessions of council, the need may arise that adjournment to an executive session would be necessary. At that time, the host will remove the public and any staff not involved from the meeting and stop the recording and lock the meeting to entry. If there is action to be taken after the executive session and at the council president's direction, the host will then unlock the meeting and begin recording again. A record of the public logins will be attached to the minutes as an attendance sheet. At the adjournment of the meeting, the video shall be compiled and added to the YouTube channel under the Borough of Mechanicsburg. During this crisis, the guest portion of the agenda shall be suspended. And finally, comments received via non or electronic means shall be read into the minutes under the correspondence portion of the agenda. And those are the rules of engagement. So it is now 7:33 PM and I call this June 1st, 2020 Borough Council Meeting to order and we will begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God. Moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Roll call.
President Weber.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarjun.
Present.
Councilman Anthony.
Present.
Councilman Pellman.
Present.
Councilman Whitcomb.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Lisa Coyne.
Here.
Solicitor Robert Coyne.
Here.
Engineer Rogowski.
Here.
Keith Myers.
Here.
Oh, there you are. EMC Wardle. Manager Sazursky.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, are there any citizens' comments? I don't see any citizens logged in and so therefore we will move on. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on May 19th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as recorded?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that?
It was Kyle.
Oh, okay. Vice President Miller, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Your volume's down a little. I don't know if you can, Roger can raise that up or not?
I can't.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, the vote, the motion passes. Okay. Managers' report.
Pretty much the same as what it's been. We've got everybody back to work. It seems to be the one exception, the, is one of the guys in the park, he does not have daycare until they open it back up. So he is continuing to use his sick time. We did a side letter of agreement with the union. Solicitor, yeah, Councilor Miller and I have been discussing that with the union to get that squared away. I expected it to be signed here before too long and get him back to work. The other thing that came up was, and this is something that I sent a memo out to council concerning the possibility of closing Railroad Avenue for the restaurants downtown for outdoor eating space, similar to what Snappers did in their parking lot. I think we could do this, maybe block off at Main Street and at Strawberry Alley. I've spoken to Solicitor Coyne, yeah, Police Chief Myers, the Police Department Lieutenant Curtis also. Everyone seems to be on board with this. I'm going to talk, if council gives me the blessing to do this, I'm going to talk to Associated Products tomorrow to see if we can get potentially the barricades donated. In the memo, I had some stipulations on there, so to speak. This would be only temporary. The other part of it was the table placements to meet the requirements of social distancing. There's enough room there to put probably maybe 15 tables out. The person placing the tables would be responsible for them and the sanitation. If wind came up, if they didn't take them in and they blew away, the person that put the tables out would be the ones responsible for them. We would be open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Trash receptacles would be their responsibility. No alcohol. Now, the question that was raised to me was, you're allowed to take alcohol out now under the governor's orders. I think we go with no alcohol. If they do it, they make sure that they do it within that confines. And if property damage occurs with the police department sees an uptick in calls, we would have to reevaluate it and consider whether we want to carry on or not. One of, and I spoke to Greg Thomas today, the gentleman from the G-Man. He actually developed a map and everything. I didn't get a chance to get it scanned in to send it out to everybody or to share it on the screen. He, he's been really up on this. He really wants to do something because he doesn't have any room in the front. He also, you know, he has no room in the back. The G-Man is one of those buildings in town that is completely landlocked on its own lot. He has absolutely no parking back there either. So he was like to do this. They are going to continue to do takeout through their front window where it slides out. I spoke to him and specifically told him, no, no serving outside. The servers could not be outside. He does not have that under his license as far as expanding his service area and he understands that. That could get him in trouble, not just with us, but with his licensing and his insurance company. So he's in, he's in agreement with that. I'm going to ask if council has any other stipulations they see on this that they would like to see or Solicitor Coyne, if you wanted to speak up and, and see if there's anything on here that, that you have a, might make a change on, let me know. But I would like to move on this and open it up for this Friday if everybody's in agreement on this.
Roger, I'm sorry. Who was that?
That was me, Rod.
Okay.
That was me, Gary.
Go ahead.
Are you going to keep them from taking beer out of the G-Man and going down to the table and sitting? Or are they going to? I mean, that's what I meant.
They're not going to serve alcohol beer as takeout. However, under the governor's order, he did allow for up to 64 ounces of mixed drinks to be taken out. That's not to be consumed on the street. I think that's one of the things that we're, well, we may have to discuss that with them, how we want to handle that particular situation.
Mr. Miller.
It's still our street.
I'm in favor of that. I think that we passed our alcoholic beverages ordinance and we should allow that for this situation because that's definitely something that would help the business. I don't see it being too much of a problem. It's just something we have to work around and it would be helpful to the, to the business itself and to our patrons who are looking for that type of service. The other question would be, should we consider limiting the time more towards the afternoon slash evening to allow for parking there during the day?
The reason why I thought about seven in the morning, Chief, I see your hands up. I'll get you, can I, I want to answer Councilman Miller's question. The reason why I chose seven is because Capital Joe's. There's a lot of people that I see going into Capital Joe's and leaving and not having any place to sit down. I think this would help Capital Joe's get back on their feet. They were closed almost the entire 10 weeks. They weren't open at all and they just opened last week as a matter of fact for only takeout. So a lot of people will get stuff, they like to go in there and sit. Now, they're not going to be able to get the free wifi that Capital Joe's offers, but they would, they would have a place right there to go sit down and have a coffee in the morning and stuff like that. The middle of the day, it's not going to be too shady in there. The morning and the evenings is when you get most of the shade on that street. Derillos, Derelios, the beauty school and the, the beauty parlor that's there, they're both closed right now. So I think until we go under the green, plus those, the students usually park on the, on the Strawberry Alley lot. So the only ones that usually park along there are people that are going into the G-Man, but they could park in the back or park out on Main Street and come back through. So I kind of like the 7:00 AM, Councilman Miller, if that explanation is okay with you.
Well, I'd be more, I'd be, I think it's better, I don't think anybody's going to the G-Man for breakfast, but.
No.
No.
I, I think it'd be better to limit it maybe towards the afternoon period up until the time we're going to close it. Have any other businesses been there? Have you talked to any of them about the closing of the parking in that area?
No. The G-Man's the only business that has people that park along there, other than the beauty school and the, and the beauty parlor. So, but I think right now, I, these were my thoughts. Capital Joe's was one that's right there. It's, you know, less than a half a block away. I think they would benefit from it. That's the reason why I picked 7:00 AM, but I'm, I'm up, it's up to council's wishes here as to how they want to proceed with it.
And what's, what's your closing time?
9:00 PM.
9:00 PM.
Jar, are we going to reach out to like the sushi restaurant and see if he would be interested in coming back for maybe a little bit of time too?
Yes, absolutely. I think, I think that we open this up to all of them. You know, even if we go with the alcohol, then I think we do, you know, Larson's across the street. Brittle Bark's not really, they're not really sitting down for any kind of meals from there, but you do have a few other ones up the street there. The Faux Restaurant, I can't remember the name of her restaurant up the street there. There's another one that's been closed for almost 12 weeks now. I mean, even so far as Nino's, if somebody wants to walk down with a pizza and sit down out there at a table or something and do that. I think Solicitor Coyne and Nate and I discussed us providing tables and I think that, that's just going to mainly lead to problems. I think they provide the tables. They can work together, take care of the trash, take care of sanitation and everything. We're just providing them the space and barricading the street.
My only regret with the, that with alcohol is that it can't be brought in from, out of, let's say off premises. So you would have to purchase, it'd have to be carryout from one of the locations downtown like the G-Man or Larf Meatworks. Like it would have to be the same day.
I think we can do that. Chief Myers, you've had to hand up for a while.
Go ahead.
Who's going to be responsible for moving the barricades around? Is it going to stay blocked 24 hours? Are the tables going to be removed at night? Those are some of the questions I have. I would also, I haven't read the sidewalk cafe ordinance in a while, but I don't believe that this situation meets criteria that we had set up specifically for that. So you're basically going to be making an exception to the open container rule and that's just something that I need to know. I don't really have, I don't have any problem with it, but I also would like if it gets abused for it to be discontinued.
I, if I might get in here, I'm not crazy about allowing alcohol out there. That's a public street, even if we do have it closed. And I feel somebody's going to complain about that.
Do you do other things, Rod, that people are going to complain about?
Oh, there's going to, there's going to be a lot of things people are going to complain about, Kyle, but booze on the street, we don't allow it anywhere in town. Why would you allow it there?
Well, I think that there's a precedent being set with like in Harrisburg, they've shut down Second Street on Saturdays to allow it. I know a lot of the business is tied to having some alcohol too. So as long as it doesn't get out of control, and I'd have to look at the ordinance. Kyle, is there rules about glass bottles or plastic or that sort of thing for safety reasons?
I'm not sure that we addressed that specifically in the ordinance because we hadn't anticipated this circumstance, but I think that we could look at special situation in terms of the rules. I think we could come up with something that would fit this circumstance because from my understanding, the takeout of alcoholic beverages is, is limited in its scope in terms of the governor's order. So we could somehow tie this to that, to that timing.
And Rodney, I think just with, you know, with making sure that the restaurants are responsible for it, just like they would be responsible in the restaurant, it just gives them an opportunity to be able to make, make some money and to be responsible towards of, of the alcohol distribution and, you know, not serving to those who are visibly intoxicated.
I, I have no problem with that, Sarah. The problem I see is if they buy a six pack of the G-Man and they go out and sit down on the side or just such tables, they drink it and they get all high or whatever and they carry an open can, they're going to carry it out in the street. We're not, we're not going to be able to control that. I don't know who's going to, the bar can't control it.
Yeah, I, I think we make it clear that this is something that's outside the realm of, of our intended, attention with the ordinance. The open container law, we did kind of modify that a little bit for specific things. This would be basically the borough providing something for the residents, or the, not the residents, the, the local restaurants to try to give them a little bit of a boost because, and particularly the ones that don't have the opportunities like Snapper where they have their own parking lot or Kalina Quesina who has their own parking lot and outside seating already built in. And it's not really through any fault of their own. I mean, you know, Conigewa, yeah. The sushi restaurant, that's easier. The G-Man, the Faux Place, Capital Joe's, all of those are kind of in the same boat. You know, it wasn't their, it's not really their fault. It's, it's a great location where they're at, but it also comes with some setbacks. It's something that I thought of that maybe we could do to give them a boost, help them get things up and running and get them open and get people out going and patronizing these businesses. Even as far as smoking pickles, they have nothing to sit outside. They do have that grass plot outside that I know Rebecca was working on some things with them, but you know, they're, they're about a block away from here too that, you know, people could come down here and do that. You know, I think, I think we monitor it very carefully and I think that's something that Chief Myers and Lieutenant Curtis and I discussed to keep an eye on things to make sure that things aren't getting out of hand, particularly in the, in the evening and the after, and, and at night after, right before closing. So I think someone asked about the tables, Chief Myers, you asked about the tables. I, I don't see an issue with keeping the street closed 24 hours. Now, the tables and stuff they could work on if they want to pull them in or if they want to leave them out. I think if we see that there's a storm coming, you know, they should move them off the street. But as far as keeping the, the barricades up, once they're up, we can keep them up for 30 days, 60 days, whatever council wishes here. So if there's some other details and stuff that you feel that, you know, we need to work out before we get, before we go with this, I'm, I'm more than willing to listen to that, but I think Chief Myers and I, and Lieutenant Curtis and I, we can work some, some things out to make this happen and try to do it as safe as possible.
One nice thing about this, cutting them off at nine o'clock is they're not going to be in there getting pickled all night like they normally would. So maybe with the cutoff at nine o'clock, we wouldn't experience the problems that we do later at night. Maybe, maybe what they can do, the bars could limit them to one six pack per day or whatever the case may be. So they, if they had three or four people, they're not going to get all blasted and start raising cane.
Now, I did see some of the things like, I think it was Duke's over on the, the riverfront. The deck is open. They're limiting people to two hours time at the restaurant. They're not accepting reservation. It's first come, first served, but two hours is plenty of time to sit down, eat and stuff like that. I think, and I think we're kind of counting on them also to self-police this a little bit too, because they realize that if things get out of hand, we're going to shut it down and we're going to open the street back up. So, and we can make that specifically clear to them that, you know, there are certain stipulations here. If we see it being abused, this is something the borough's doing for them. This isn't something that they're coming to us and asking us to do. This is what we're doing, something for them and trying to help them out. If, if they're going to abuse it, then the borough can also stop it.
I think that's a good idea. I just want to register by support of this. I think that we ought to give them the responsibility. Nine o'clock, it's still light out even now, so it's going to be light before we even get to closing it. And if we, if we, I don't know that we want to try and put rules on there that we don't want to enforce a two hour rule. Sounds like a good idea.
Right.
I think it'd be hard for them to monitor. So I, I think we ought to allow for the restaurants for the next 30 days to try this with the alcohol. Let them know what the rules are and let them figure out how to self-monitor. And then if they screw it up, well then we'll pull it back. But at least this way, we're giving them the opportunity to, to win.
John, that's, that's probably not a bad idea, but I think we need to, we have to be on top of it.
Okay.
I for one will be happy to go down and have a, a beer down there every day if that's what it takes to do my civic duty.
I'll join you, John.
All right, so.
Barry, you're working.
If I may just offer this suggestion, when we get to the additions to the agenda, if someone would like to make a motion to add that item to the agenda with whatever stipulations you want to go through and hopefully we can limit the discussion because we've already had it. Okay? That sounded like a, all right, so very good. So, oh boy, we're getting music now.
Now we're getting music. Where's that coming from?
Very cool. Well, we're, we're a progressive group here. All right. Let's move on to the EMC report. Do you have anything else, Roger? I'm sorry.
No, that was everything.
Okay, thank you.
Election, oh, one, I'm sorry, there is one thing. The Borough Office will be closed tomorrow. I'll be in the office, I'll pull the ladies to stay home just to help with Election Day to keep the numbers down that we have in the building. And then Wednesday morning, they're coming to fog the entire building again. So it'll be disinfected come Wednesday morning and they're also going to redo all the police cars. The police cars are all done for free. So that's all I have, sir.
Very good. Okay, now the EMC report.
Nate, how do you keep getting muted?
What was that?
Okay. Your volume's down a little bit, Nate.
Seems to be a common problem with my computer lately.
Okay.
Is that any better?
Yes, that is much better.
Okay. The EMC has continued to work over the last two weeks to protect the health and wellbeing of the residents of Mechanicsburg to collect and disseminate information to Borough officials. We have submitted all current expenses to the county, which at this point are as close to $54,000, which includes sick pay, but also costs for signage, PPE, et cetera. As of today, there are 72,282 cases of COVID-19 statewide and 5,567 deaths. In Cumberland County, there are 635 cases and 52 deaths. More than half of the cases have occurred at nine long-term care facilities throughout the county. Nearly all the deaths have also occurred among long-term care facility residents. In this, in the 17055 ZIP code, there are 62 positive cases and 737 negative cases. Please note that if any nursing homes in the ZIP code have positive cases, they would be included in that total. And I know that at least one is within that ZIP code. I know a question you all may have is when Cumberland County could move to the green phase? In order to move to the green phase, there are a number of things that a county needs to be able to exhibit. However, a few of those include a decreasing rate of new cases over the last seven days, a decreasing percent positivity rate over a 14-day period, and the ability to handle any outbreaks through contact tracing. Using the 17055 ZIP code, the percent positivity has certainly decreased from around 11% two weeks ago to nearly 8.4% today. The rate of new cases has also decreased over the last week from 58 cases from May 19th through May 25th to 37 cases from May 25th to June 1st. Also a positive sign. The region, using the state's community health nurses and also those assisting from the Penn State College of Medicine, continue to conduct contact tracing, so this is not an issue either. While I cannot guarantee that Cumberland County will be announced as moving to green this upcoming Friday for the following Friday, it is a possibility. If not, the next week could also be likely. Even though we move closer to the green phase, I cannot caution enough the importance of continuing to take proper precautions moving forward. People should continue to wear masks anytime they're coming into contact or meeting with someone who is not a resident of their household. People should continue to practice social distancing and wash their hands frequently. I've heard several people lately either post of an illness in their family or concerns over the virus. And just because the data is improving and the numbers are decreasing, it's important to remember that each person who gets sick with COVID-19 is not just a number, but a human being. And that brings me to the next part of my report. And the EMC is continuing to follow the threat of other issues in Pennsylvania and the local area as well, from peaceful protests that become agitated to hurricanes as hurricane season begins today. We also have had a relative lack of severe beer weather so far this year, which is a blessing from all else considered. We did have a number of severe thunderstorm warnings for the borough on Friday, but there were no significant effects that I was made aware of and I did not notice a lot of wind looking out of my first floor office window at home. Now I'm more than willing to answer any questions anyone has.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much, Nate. Appreciate your, your hard work and your inform, information that you have been able to share with us.
Of course.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I will give my monthly report on the 16th of this month. Please excuse me tonight.
You are certainly excused.
Thank you.
All right. Additions to the agenda.
I will add that one, I don't know who.
I think Mr. Anthony was trying to do that.
I was, you know, I was on mute there, sorry.
Okay, John.
Dog was barking in the background. So I guess I move that we follow Roger's recommendation to, to close down Railroad Avenue for the purpose of allowing for. for restaurants, uh, to be able to offer, for patrons of restaurant, takeout food at restaurants and beverage, and adult beverages or alcoholic beverages, to be able to use that area as a picnic area. It will be main, updated and maintained by the restaurants themselves.
Okay, is, is there a second to, oh, a second to adding that motion?
Second.
Okay. Um, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Hey, Roger?
Must be a box.
Shouldn't we, shouldn't, shouldn't we be telling them that we're going to be checking that every couple of weeks to make sure it's working all right?
Yes, yes. That'll be part of the whole thing. I'm, I'm gonna, uh, Councilman Anthony had that down there. I have one written. I'll, I'll read that off, um, when we get to the discussion point with the stipulations as discussed, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to add this to the agenda. Unless they hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, the, the vote passes unanimously. How about that? Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Whitcomb, I believe, did that.
Yes.
That right.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Pelman seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, unless they hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, the motion passes. Action items before Borough Council, Mr. Szarszky.
All right. Uh, the action items before Borough Council on June 1st, 2020. Discussion of Possible Action on Penn Waste's Request for a Letter in Opposition to the Proposed State Tax Increase of $1 per Ton to the Tipping Fee. Everyone got a copy of that letter? Oh, I'm sorry, Scott?
Mr. Pelman.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mr. Pelman made the motion, and Mr. Whitcomb seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. Next item.
Discussion of Possible Action to Accept the Resignation of Jack Wenshaw from Borough Council.
Very sadly, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Pelman makes the motion, second?
And I will second that sadly.
Mr. Whitcomb makes a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, we'll record, we'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, regrettably, the motion carries. Next item.
Discussion of Possible Action to Accept the Time Extension for Landmark, Legacy Park Conditional Use Hearing until July 23rd, 2020. Um, I want to explain this one a little bit. We set the conditional use hearing at the last meeting for July 7th. This gives us time to get the, the, all this stuff taken care of, and if there's something happens that we don't need July 7th, we have an extra meeting in there between, uh, the 7th and the 23rd. So this gives us a little bit of extra wiggle room.
Understood. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Whitcomb, second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries.
Discussion of Possible Action to Engage PFM Financial Advisors LLC as the Financial Planner for the Borough of Mechanicsburg.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Anthony makes the motion, a second?
Second.
And it's seconded by Vice President Miller. Is there any discussion?
I believe that's a bidding process, isn't it? If we, if we, if we're going to do that, we need to go out for bids for additional people or find out what they're going to offer.
No, I don't believe so. I'll, I'll, I'll defer to the solicitor on that one?
I believe it's a professional service. It's not required for the, uh, bidding process.
Additionally, this is coming from one of our committees, and we traditionally have honored the committee's, um, suggestions unless we have a major issue with it.
Perhaps we can make a comment?
Sure. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Miller?
No, we could have PFM. Are there, they should be at the meeting here.
Oh. Zach is, Zach is on. He's got his mic muted.
Everyone else? I'm without my camera on. How you doing?
Good.
So, so yeah, Zach Willard here from Public Financial Management. Um, you know, we, we're the leading independent financial advisor both in Pennsylvania and the United States. Um, you know, what we solely do and specialize in is helping boroughs and townships and school districts and, you know, local governments, uh, when they need to borrow money for new projects, we help you get the proper financing. And then when it comes to existing debt, um, we will help you refinance it. So, you know, kind of since early 2017, you know, we've, we've given the borough, you know, some, some different refinancing opportunity, suggestions. You know, last year, we kind of talked a little bit more in detail about upcoming opportunity, um, because this opportunity wasn't going to be available until this summer, until summer of 2020. But oftentimes, there's prep work and things you can do ahead of time. Um, so we've just been helping you try to prepare for this, um, you know, in the event that you want to take advantage of the low interest rate environment. And, you know, right now, it looks like the timing is perfect between your call date, which is this year, and that's the first available time that you can refinance the, the debt. And then the other combination of that is the interest rates which are at historic lows. So you're able to, you're able to kind of start this process right away. Um, you're able to lock in interest rates here at the end of July, and it usually takes about eight weeks to kind of get prepped. Based on the current market, you know, there's significant savings to the tune of, you know, almost three quarters of a million dollars, um, if you go forward with this process. We love to help you, uh, work through this. We work for, um, I think 300 local governments, you know, in Pennsylvania and another 250 school districts. Um, we do this, and we love to part.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I heard, I heard a figure of $25,000 initial cost. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think we said a typical range for, for this is around 20 to 25,000. Um, you know, to go through the process of, of borrowing money, you know, you're borrowing about $10 million to pay off the old debt, or a little less than that. Um, that's a typical fee, correct? And it's a flat fee. It's not dependent upon how much you save or the size of the borrowing. Um, you know, our firm discharges a flat fee for, for the process. And we also explained in the finance committee meeting, you know, we're here to help with this situation right now. Um, you know, we showed you a lot of our local clients in the area. Most of our clients are 15, 20, 25-year clients. You know, our goal is to, to partner with you going forward. So when things come up and when things happen in the market, or if you need somebody to attend a meeting in between financings to help explain, uh, you know, how you might fund a project or fund some road projects or stormwater, whatever they may be, um, you know, that's what we'll be here for and help you do. And I think that's what a lot of our clients find a lot of value in, is, is kind of the added services beyond just doing the refinancing or the new borrowing process.
Zach, could I ask you pretty, to quickly just summarize, what is, is the difference between an independent financial advisor and a underwriter? And how you operate in finding us the best rate when we go for underwriting and, uh, for those services?
Yeah, that's a, that's a real important point. Thanks for asking that. So, you know, traditionally, the borough has worked with, um, an underwriter. So it's, you know, a Wall Street firm that sells bonds directly to investors. And, and that's, that's, you know, a lot of places do that. Um, kind of the, the new way to do this in the last, you know, 10 to 15 years is you also have an independent financial advisor such as PFM, and we have a fiduciary duty to the borough to make sure that you're getting the best transaction. Okay? So our sole duty is to figure out the best way to do this. Make sure, it may end up being a bond issue, all right, but we talked about another route that we're going to explore for you, which is to do a competitive RFP process where local banks to do a bank loan. And what we'll do is we'll compare those bank loan interest rates to what the bond market's doing. And we'll bring that back to Borough Council and we'll explain all the pros and cons. And then that way, you have libidinous to decide if you want to move forward with private placement with a local bank, or to go into the market and issue bonds, refinance the debt. The goal for refinancing is typically to save as much, as much money as you possibly can. Find the best way to do that. We have a fiduciary duty to make sure that's, that's.
I still feel that, I still feel that we're laying out $25,000 initially, we need to go out and listen for some other people and see what they have to offer.
Well, as well. We're happy to, to keep the fee on the low end of the range, if that's helpful, but I'll let you all discuss that.
Well, Zach, I got a, I got a question. I would, clarification. The other night when we had our, the, the finance committee meeting, I did ask what the percentages were, and we, you said it would be a $25,000 flat fee. Now, is that just for the refinancing of the bonds? I mean, any kind of thing outside of that, or we bill hourly, or how is that?
No, and anything outside of that, we, we typically don't bill for that. Um, you know, that's just the way we've done business in PA for the last 45 years. Um, you know, we help you with things in between. You know, kind of Roger, kind of like we've been doing, we've, you know, we've contacted you and we've met with you and showed you schedules. You know, we don't, you don't get hourly bills or anything like that from us, we're just here to help. And then when you do go through the financing process, that's when we're paid, um, you know, at the end of the transaction.
Do you say an underwriter versus an independent broker? Can you explain a little bit about like fees and how that's different?
Sure, so, so the underwriter, if we do end up doing a bond issue, if that turns out to be the right answer, we will need an underwriter. Because PFM doesn't have money, we don't have investors, you know, that's how we keep our independence to our clients. So we will go out and we can either work with your underwriter that you've used historically, which is Benning and Scattergood, or we can go and do an RFP process to find a new underwriter. Okay? Now, the underwriter typically, you know, that's, that's the largest fee in, in this type of a transaction. They do charge a fee that's based on the size of the transaction. So the bigger the, the borrowing, the more, you know, their fee is. And that's something that through the RFP process, you know, we can help slim down that cost. Um, you know, a lot of times on a, on a bond issue, eight to 10 million, you know, that cost gets into the 60 to 80,000 dollar range. So again, you know, that's one aspect of this. The other and more important part is the interest rate that you get on the new bond issue. So when we're talking about an eight or 10 million dollar interest, you know, borrowing, the interest rate really makes a big difference as far as how much money you're saving. And that's the part that PFM specializes in, is getting the lowest possible interest rate. Because you don't want an interest rate that was pretty good, I mean, you want the best market rate that you can get. And I think the example we used the other night is, you know, if you get an all-in interest rate of a 3%, well, but really the all-in interest rate was supposed to be at 2.93%. It doesn't sound that far off, but for millions and millions of dollars, you know, over a 10 or 15-year period, that really adds up to a lot of dollars. And, you know, we, we do, my team here in Harrisburg, you know, we just serve Pennsylvania. Um, we typically do, you know, about $7 billion with the B dollars worth of this a year, you know, across our local government clients. So, you know, we are very experienced. We work with, you know, a lot of people and we have a lot of good ideas, and that's, you know, why we, uh, I think we're uniquely positioned to help you get the best answer for, for this.
Hey, Zach, this is Kyle again. I am, uh, the chairman of the municipal authority, and I just wanted to, if this goes through tonight, I wanted to make you aware that we're going to invite you to the next authority meeting, um, which is on June, uh, 14th, I believe.
Okay.
Um, it's not next Monday, it's the following Monday. And my question, have you seen municipalities and their authorities share the cost of PFM? And would that be an option, since you're really working for both entities? And since so much of the savings is on the authority side, um, would that be an option for us to share the cost? And also, would you be willing to, um, should we pass this tonight and approve PFM? Should, would you engage with us in a written, uh, fee proposal or written fee agreement to like a, a not exceed figure?
Sure. Two more good questions. So here's typically how it works in Pennsylvania. So the state allows you, when you borrow money, whether it's to finance new projects or to refinance debt, they allow you to pay all the professionals out of the borrow. And, and that would be how 99% of, of people do it. So you don't come out of the sewer fund or the general fund to pay the professionals, it's actually part of the borrowing. So assuming that that's how we would move forward here, the authority would be, actually be the ones paying for all the professional service fees in this transaction because, you know, of this transaction, let me just look here on the size, but almost all of this debt is related to the sewer fund.
Right.
So, yes, so 9.5 million of the 9.6 million is related to the sewer fund, so I don't know what percentage that is, but it's pretty close to, you know, 98% or 99% of this is paid out of the sewer fund. So Kyle, that, that would basically be what's happening under the current arrangement, would be that the authority would be the ones, uh, paying for the, the transaction costs. And did I answer your question on that?
It does, thank you.
And as far as the, uh, the written engagement, yeah, we can put together, uh, you know, a written proposal that would have the, the flat fee suggested in it. Okay, happy to.
It would make the other council members feel, uh, uh, more comfortable in this, we could just make it the motion contingent on, uh, the solicitor and the borough manager, you know, receiving that document and then... Does that sound like something we could do, uh, Solicitor Coin?
That would be fine. I think that would be appropriate for Roger and I to, to look at that, to make sure we know the, the scope of what's going to be, uh, undertaken and the cost, uh, for those professional services to be provided to both the authority and to the borough.
So, Mr. Anthony, would you be willing to amend your, uh, motion to add that caveat?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Miller, I'm assuming your second would be also appropriate. I do have one question. Um, Zach, if you could please review once again, you said that the sewer authority is like 9.5 million? And then what's the borough's, 100,000 or something?
Yeah, so, let me look here. So we, we have breakout schedules.
130.
So, yeah, but.
I thought it was about 135,000.
Yeah, it is 100, 130 is the exact number of outstanding principal amount.
Wouldn't, I was not able to, to be at the meeting, um, for obvious reasons. My question is, that's not a whole lot of money. If we had the ability to pay that off and remove that debt, wouldn't that be helpful in this scenario?
Sure, so, you know, we do see, um, sometimes when an issuer has, you know, reserve funds or something that they would like to put to use, you can do that as part of the refinancing. So I think what, I think what you're asking is, you know, if, if, if the borough had 135,000, that they could, as part of the refinancing, put that money into the refinancing and pay off the general fund portion of this new debt? And the answer would be yes, you can do that. Um, and you would just get rid of the, the portion that's associated with the general fund, so that everything remaining after the refinancing would just be related to the sewer fund. Now, Mr. Weber, if you don't do that, you know, we do keep track of the, the small 135,000 piece. We will keep track of exactly what that is. It'll still have the same final maturity that it has now, so that when you're doing your budget, and Roger and Glenda are putting together which is, goes to the sewer fund and which goes to the general fund, you know, you still do have an internal breakout of exactly what that is.
Okay.
Um, but you can use cash to pay off some of this, once we hit that call date, which is where we are today.
Very good. Is there any other discussion?
This one, uh, President Weber, Zach, this is, we're, we're not going to be eliminating scatter good as far as our, our bond issuer, or are we going to be listening, uh, eliminating Eckert Siemens? They'll still be our bond counsel, correct? You're not taking the place of any of those.
No, so, so Eckert Siemens, they're still your bond counsel, we'll still need, I see Joe's on the phone, we'll still need them to go through all this process. You know, they have to file all the legal documents and make sure we're following all the rules and federal tax law. the rules and federal tax law. And then if, if the borough wants to work with Benning and Scattergood as your underwriter, that's, that's fine with PFM. You know, we work with them on lots of transactions. And like I said earlier, if, if you would want us to find a new underwriter, we can also do that. You know, we're not advocating for that. You know, our job is to get you the best deal regardless of which underwriter you use. Now, if we, when we go through the bank loan process, you know, typically, they're not part of that process. And part of the reason why it does, sometimes a bank loan can be the right answer is because you don't have to pay the underwriter their, you know, their large portion of the transaction fee. So if, when we go through the, the kind of the analysis of bond issue versus a bank loan, they would be part, the underwriter would be part of the bond issue, but not part of the bank. Did that answer your question, Roger?
Yeah, it did. Now, we, we discussed at one time, and I don't know if this is something that you'll bring into it too. We discussed at one time with PennDOT has an infrastructure bank where they give half-prime loans for 10 years. We discussed a couple paving projects with them. The interest rates started going up and we kind of let that go. Would that be something that would bring into your services too? Where we could, you know, you could advise on one-way direction to go there, especially if it's a half-prime loan?
Yeah, exactly. So, so that would be, so that would just be something different, right? But so, let's say six months from now, you want to start discussing some road loans. You know, what we would do is we'd put together some analysis. We'd show you what you could get in the bond market, what you could get on the bank loan market. And then for something like that, we can look and see what, what kind of rate the infrastructure bank offering. And then that way, you can make the right decision as to what to do. You know, sometimes what gets complicated is if they're only offering a 10-year amortization, you know, some places will finance roads for up to 15 years. So maybe the lower interest rate, but you have to pay it over 10 years. It might actually be better to do a 13-year loan with an interest rate that's slightly higher. I'm just kind of making up an example. But, but that would be, you know, some of the analysis that, that we like to take you through again, so you can ultimately decide how you want to, how you want to fund the road projects.
Okay.
Maybe stormwater, you know, stormwater, Penn Vest is, is an option to finance stormwater projects right now. You know, so we just like to look at all the options when you're going through the financing process.
Are there any other questions, comments? We do have a motion on the table, so unless I hear a negative response, we will ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous.
Negative.
Okay, we have one negative and therefore the motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, great. We look forward to working with you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Zach.
See you soon.
All right. Another item on the agenda, discussion of possible action on a special events permit for the Halloween parade to be held Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 at 7:00 PM on the usual route.
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
All right. If Mr. Anthony made the motion, Mr. Whitcomb, your motion would be the second. That's okay with you? All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, unless they hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. Mr. Serski?
Discussion on possible action to close Railroad Avenue to provide a seating area for takeout, takeout consumption for the local restaurants with the stipulations as discussed.
I would just add, Roger, that it'd be temporarily closed.
Ah, yes, I missed that one.
All right. So we, we have the motion, or we have the action item on the floor. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Miller makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony seconds. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, unless they hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. This is the moment in our meeting where we entertain citizens' comments once again. Is there any citizens on board here who wish to make a comment? Please hit your raise your hand button. I'm not hearing any. We're seeing any? All right, so we will move on. Is there any other business? I will go in the order that, again, that I see you on the screen, I hope I get everybody. We'll start with Glenda.
No, sir.
Thank you. And Sarah Martin will go with you next.
Ma'am, please have your ethics forms if you haven't turned them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
They were due May 1st.
Yeah. Roger, do you have anything further to add?
I do. I sent this out to the authority today. As everyone knows, we've been dealing with the church road situation. Actually, I sent it out to, to Councilman Miller as the chairman of the, the authority board. We did not get our green streets, green sidewalks. I forget what all the green is that's in there. We didn't get the grant. I am going to ask for the analytics and the review of our proposal so that we can better work on things going into the future. So we're, Greg, I got to send that over to you too, for you to take a look at.
I saw it, yeah.
The only thing we've got right now. You got it already?
I did, yeah. I was tapping it up too.
All right. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Let's see, EMC Wardle.
Have nothing.
Thank you. Solicitor Coin?
Sir, I think we, given the action taken by council tonight regarding the, accepting the resignation, some scheduling for the interview process for suggestion. I don't know if Roger had looked at that or given some thought to that.
That was on the email you just sent.
Yeah, the text. I didn't know if there was a.
All right. Our goal would be to have applicants get their information in within the next week, compile the list of applicants and hold a special meeting prior to the June 16th meeting to conduct interviews for those who we would intend to invite. If that's acceptable to the rest of council. I don't know that we need to make a motion of that. It's just a procedural thing. But that's the plan. And, and the reason for that is in hopes that we can have the new person onboard in July.
So Solicitor Coin, you, we have the, the, yeah, the advertisement ready to go. It's just a matter of sending it in tomorrow morning with a, with a deadline date on it. So we should be in pretty good shape as far as that schedule goes.
So, okay. So, President Weber, are we looking to have that interview process before the next regular meeting or a special?
No, before, on the day of the next.
The day of, okay.
Yes. I'm thinking 6:45, something like that. We'll have to see how many candidates we have and work accordingly, but we can let everyone know if that's okay. Now, Mr. Anthony, you had a meeting scheduled that same evening, I believe.
That's correct.
And your meeting is scheduled for what time?
5:30.
5:30. I think that should work, shouldn't it?
I would think so.
Okay, very good.
Quick question relative to this. The person who is appointed, will they run, have to run for office this November or next November?
They would, they would serve out the remainder of Mr. Winchell's term. So that would get them into 2021 November, not 2020 November.
Got it, thanks.
And it's their option whether they want to run.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Right. I'm just saying their term would be up at the end of 2021.
Correct, correct. Okay, are we squared away with that? Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor Coin, for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now, let's see, where am I now? Oh, Greg Rigolsky, you have anything to add?
I do not, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Ritter?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So let's go down the, the row here. Mr. Anthony?
The Community Day Committee met. As council knows, we, we are not having or holding Community Day this year, but we are holding something a bit different, which I'm going to pass off to Sarah to help explain.
All right. So I'm going to jump in line. Is that okay, Mr. President?
You bet.
Okay. So in the week of August 3rd through the 8th, we are partnering with the churches and Downtown Partnership. And we've also invited the rec department to join us to plan a virtual family safe activity to support our businesses downtown. And the hope is, is to be able to hide wrenches and to have a scavenger hunt for our families to come through and to frequent some of these businesses. Downtown will be making videos and highlighting those businesses throughout that time. But I think it will be a great way to get our citizens engaged and back downtown safely and showing some support to our businesses. So we're pretty excited about it.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Miller? You were muted there. Sorry, Kyle. I think that was nothing. Nothing further. Uh, Mr. Whitcomb?
Nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Pellman?
Yeah, just real quickly, I haven't been able to say much in order to benefit the library because obviously activities have been scaled back because of the COVID issue. But the June book sale has been canceled. Rockwell's Dine Out is canceled, but they are having a fundraiser at Ash Combs Wednesday, day after tomorrow, June 3rd, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Anything you purchase there at Ash Combs, if you present a flyer, 20% will go to the library. So just thank you if you, if you can do some gardening and, you know, do some patronage of Ash Combs, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Pellman. Okay, did I miss anyone? All right, I just have a few items I want to call your attention to, and I meant to do this earlier in the meeting. Tonight, the school district is honoring their 2020 graduates. They've asked everybody in the community to turn all their house lights on as the seniors will be driving through Upper Allen and Mechanicsburg Borough and Charminstown and show your support of these kids who didn't get the opportunity to have a prom and didn't get the opportunity to, to have a graduation and an awards night. And we, we send our regards to all of them and our good wishes and our love to them and their families and what they've had to endure during this time. But we're hoping that we can use the old adage, this too shall pass and things will work well for you and your future. So it, that started at 8 o'clock. So I'm assuming, I think it was 8:00 or 8:30. So I'm assuming that if you're home, you can turn your lights on. I turned mine on before I left to come down to Borough Hall tonight. Also, I want to call your attention, and I probably should have done this during the correspondence section of the, the meeting, but the local churches have put together a statement. And I believe, if I correct me on the number, but I believe there were 14 local churches who got together and drafted this statement. And if you have not seen it, it is posted on Facebook. I have a copy and I'd be happy to copy it to each of you. I don't want to take the time to read it tonight, but it is an amazing document when you consider that you have 14 different congregations and their pastors coming together, spearheaded mainly by Lane Lebo and a couple of other pastors who managed to work to get these people all to come together and make this statement. It is really a testament to our community and, and the people that live within our community. And I wanted to make sure that all of you are aware of that. And if I, when I get home tonight, I will copy that and send it out to each of you for your review. It is really quite a moving piece regardless of your religious beliefs. I think it's, again, a testament to our people. And there was one other thing. Oh, as since we have passed the ability to close off Railroad Avenue, Roger, I, I hate to dump more work on you, but I would really like this to be advertised, put a news release out. I think this is going to be a huge positive gesture on the part of council and, and the staff. And I would really appreciate if we can get the word out and say, we're trying to do our best to, to make things as normal as possible under the circumstances we've all had to endure here with this.
Not to mention, not to mention an idea that was in our comprehensive plan.
True. Very good. So that's all I have. If there is nothing else, I want to ask you all to stay safe. And once again, thank all of our citizens in Mechanicsburg for doing the same. I will say that one last thing, I was at a, an ice cream place, not in the borough, unfortunately, or maybe fortunate. Because I was appalled that I would say 90% or more of the people at that ice cream stand did not have masks on, were not practicing social distancing. And I just can't believe with all the stuff that's been going on, that we still have people out there who, who refuse to do that because it does work. And whether you like it or not, it does work. And so with that, we will adjourn.